Municipality and the people who pay taxes in our municipality. This area does not have a whole lot of services that are being utilized in what we have kind of brainstormed so far. From a broad regional standpoint, absolutely, major impact, it could make a really big difference. But if we're saying we're spending, I mean literally tens of thousands of dollars a year on a building that doesn't actually impact our constituents, our direct constituents, what are we doing? And so that would be where I want the community input, what do they, you know, what do people want in here? So we can build towards that vision because otherwise from a financial standpoint, we're just pumping money into a really nice looking building. And that, I mean, that's it. It's more of a figurehead than a service driven asset.
Say, I would like, I mean, definitely have like community input and involvement, but not necessarily another committee if possible would be great. Like if there was public meetings about it and, you know, just like with the school where the, you come down with a 10% construction plan and have the architect explain, you know, what's roughly going on, where they are now and take input from there. I just, I worry about it getting too much, too many cooks in the kitchen on it, just.
And there aren't a lot of choices over there because the building's already there, the room's already there, you know, there's, there's a lot of things that are already set. It's not a, you know.
Finish works where the real crap comes though. It's like, just like, cause you have a box is one thing and then like the next, how you're using the box is a lot of, that's where the variable can pop up. But that'd be my only thing is yet again offload that on the other service to figure out that information rather than.
Yeah, cause I mean.
Well, that was part of the beauty of splitting it with another group is that, you know, the expenses are cut and we have the community space and all the reasons why we've talked about it before. I think we're all still right there, so I.
I've just been really thinking about like services offered clearly a huge portion and of many municipal budgets, a huge portion of it is administrative. And so yes, if we're designing a building to house those administrative functions, that's good. But I don't know if the ratio, you know, at the end of the day, if we're looking at our budget five years from now, our annual budget five years from now, and we're saying our administrative fees for this building are, I'm just, you know, 75% of what you're bringing in from, like that's, that's not any sense.
So what we've talked about was mayor's office in there, you know, council quarters, places to be, someplace that people can come, it's an ADA accessible. Yeah. And then, yeah, a town hall, town meeting space. And then, then these can be rented out. These are office spaces that could bring in income to offset that. There are places over there that might be, you know, rentable even on our portion, but a lot of the portion goes to UDB. So they'll, they've, they've got a bigger chunk of it.
Well, we do have to remember that we're paying in the cost of the renovation. It's a one-third, two-third division, which means that we're getting one-third of all the public space too, which is a lot of footage that we'll be maintaining and paying for and heating and doing.
Hallways alone are 3,000 square feet of that building.
Yeah. So, so I, I like what Erin raised last week, although it makes me nervous. But I think it is something we should set on for and maybe just do it as, as a community discussion and invite the community to come in and talk about what, okay, we've got the building, we've had the building, now we've got some money. What do you envision putting in here? And then what do you expect to do with this? This is a big building. So.
In order to give that information to the architect, so that they can.
Right. And so I guess what the question is then is we're putting it on the agenda is what path are we taking for the purpose of Erin, Erin being able to move forward with getting advertisements out and bids out.
You're super helpful. And I think too, you know, when we receive public input as well, and I, I think some of this like came out in our strategic plan, but like, not just how it's going to be used, but who is using it, who, who, and you know, are we, I don't know, again, I just, I feel so bad even saying this, but okay. So we've got this amazing gymnasium space, the floors were renovated, this, you know, this is Bluff Community Center. In terms of like the percentage of the population who are utilizing this, is that a good return on investment, is it not? And very much for both of these big assets moving forward, what is, you know, someone might have a really fantastic idea. It impacts 0.01% of our population, whereas, you know, how can we best optimize this for everyone? And that not, not just our, you know, but of course the greater region, but you know, for, for our constituents, what is the best percentage of those, I guess?
And a lot of the arguments were, you know, when you provide a place for the arts and you provide a place for the indigenous gardens and you make a place alive and you have it right there and you have a place to come, all of that adds value to not only the building, but also to the community. It makes it more livable and all, all of the rest of the reasons. So I think it's a little bit late in the game to talk about that unless you're bailing on the whole project.
Not bailing on the whole project, just trying to optimize. I don't want to get.
We need to get the building constructed, like they say, unless we're completely gutting it. We have rooms and we can decide what's being used in those rooms and those rooms need insulated, the heat needs working, the lights need put back in, the floor needs put back together, you know, those things need to happen in order to use it in any situation. And then you decide what, who, you know, what demand there is. As soon as you have an office available for rent, somebody's right there wanting it. So nobody's going to come ask until it's, it's ready. There's that huge kitchen there, there's, you know, all that, but there's definitely rentable space. If we decide as a town, we don't need it particularly, then, then you put it out for rent. You have one little room that, that the people come down from Monticello, hopefully, that come and, and provide those services locally. So everybody's not on the road, you know, the health things can be here or there, there's a lot more visibility there. Seniors are here. I mean, there's, there's a lot of, of pieces that are rolling in. And right now it's been tough after the whole COVID thing. We've got a lot of things that have shifted back and forth, but there's, there's still demand and there's still interest. So I think go for it with the engineer and the architect and.
So what I'll do is get fashion, some kind of agenda item to get us back to be able to talk about it and vote. But in the meantime, I don't think Erin's got a large gap of nothing to do, so.
So do we have a consensus to put out a job offer or whatever, a request?
Bid, bid package.
Or, or some, just to put it out to the engineers to see if there's somebody that would take on this project with us? Is that the plan or is there anybody?
I don't hear anybody saying that they don't think we should go that direction, but I do think it's something that we should have on the agenda and vote on.
Right, we should, but I'm just wondering with the work session, so like you said, we don't have to bring it up again, make sure we understand that we have a consensus or, or not.
Well, does anybody think that there should be a different route?
We're approaching two o'clock.
Yep.
So this would be a good time for a break if you're done with your part.
I am done with item one.
No, but that's good, that's good. And do you have any questions?
No, I appreciate the input and I do agree, community input is vital for a community space, so I.
It's just hard with community input because, I mean, honestly, our community is, is, has a very hard time separating the fact that we're talking about one-third of the building that we have design capacity over. The other two-thirds of the building are not up to us, you know, I mean, that's, that's.
So the only thing would be if, if there's like some room that we, everybody says it's got to be a pottery studio or something, design it for that. Unless there's something like that, then I don't think there's much reason to get it now that we've talked about it.
With opening it up to the whole community is, is that, well, okay, great, we can all have as many pretty pictures in our heads as we want. When it comes to reality, we have a very small space of the whole entire portion.
To go along with that, I've heard numerous opinions about the kitchen, how the kitchen's going to be utilized. And there's probably as many opinions on that kitchen as there are people at this table. And we have a common interest in the kitchen, but we are not going to be able to control that nor does anybody else, so.
And that will be part of the agreement between the two, and it, two condo owners of how much you rent that space for when it's used and that kind of thing.
Or if it's even rented. I mean, that's, that's.
Right, but that's the two, two groups have to decide that in their agreements. Cause it, cause if you're going to use it, if, if you're gonna, you know, how you decide who uses it and how often and who cleans it and all that, just like up here.
That's in the common space, part of the condominium. So it's two o'clock, let's take a break, we're done with this. Erin, do you want me to run and get the recorder?
No, I can do both, but do like, yeah, okay, perfect. So we're stopping the recorder.
We're stopping the recording and taking a break, 10 minutes.
Okay. Perfect. Okay. Got it.
So it's 2:12 PM, this is a continuation of the work session for May 2nd, 2024. And we're all present and accounted for. So what do people want to do? We should probably jump down to four to talk about the sign ordinance and whether or not there are any questions. And then what I'd like to see is go back to two because that's something we need to talk about for the budget this year, for the 2025 fiscal year budget. But I think in order to move the sign ordinance along, let's see if anybody has any questions, concerns. Did everybody get the red line version from our attorney?
And then I'm going to share my screen with the clean version, so if we're making any edits, we can see what those are in real time, if that works.
That'd be great.
Sign ordinance.
And I am still interested in what happens to these attachments. Cause they stay on my phone, but not on my computer.
We, I, I will try to work with you, we'll be in on that, cause yeah, that was really strange.
Oh wait, they're there. Okay, so everybody, if you see right underneath the, the information, there's a little blue thing that says information or something? And then it says you can click on it to get the original string.
You should show me that when we've got a second.
Okay, it's just right under the, right under the who it's to. There's a little thing right there and then it opens the original string.
Amazing.
And it does it, it, it does it. So anyway, cancel the question, bye. If anybody has problems with that, cause that was a recurring problem over the last couple of years.
Okay, so looking at what recommendations Chris Mack and Annie made, does anybody have any questions, any concerns? And if not, then I will put it on the agenda for the seventh and be able to maybe put this to rest for a while.
I liked it. I thought it was very clear, the hazard parts. He gave reasons for certain things. So, so basically I liked it.
Yeah, I, I appreciated his cleanup and stuff on, and like, you know, I looked at it a lot. And the things that he saw and corrected, I thought were really good. I had a couple of questions though. Yeah, is this fine or do you want to go in order and look at it in order, everybody can comment, or do you want us just to potluck around?
Well, I would, I guess the first question would be, does anybody have a specific area that they want to talk about? To me, it looked fine the way it was modified by Chris. And I don't have any questions, but I guess if someone has a question or an area you want to talk about, this would be the time to raise it.
And just potluck it, okay. Okay, so then if you go to the exempt ones, which is 6.61.030. Uh, it's on page six. Yeah, there you go, Erin, and then it's under, let's see. Number three, temporary signs that are installed for a period of not to exceed 180 days. So in our last discussion we had and a lot through planning and zoning when they were doing it, it's all about that enforcement thing of who's going to keep track of these days, who's going to keep track of the time? Are they consecutive days? I put it up for 10 days, I took it down yesterday, now I'm doing it another, did my 180 days start again? So I would be in favor of just X-ing number three, that if you put a sign up, it, it goes with the sign ordinance. It's nothing unusual. So you, you put it up and it matches it, you can't put an inflatable figure up for 180 days. You can't put up a giant one that doesn't meet dark sky.
Huge billboard or something. Huge billboard or something for a hundred and eighty days.
Because it's only a hundred and eighty days. I just say get rid of that. The sign ordinance has plenty of flexibility to do whatever you need to do. You put it up as long as you want to put it up. If you want to take it down, take it down. But I think we need to just X number three.
I kind of agree with that. That makes sense to me. Then we don't have to sit there, mark days on the calendar.
Are you happy with that, Jan? I am going to live with whatever changes anyone wants. I am so done reading the sign order. So I am fine with that. What about you, Linda? Are you?
Yeah, although I think the neighbors would keep track of it.
We don't need that. That's the kind of crap that we don't need stirring up the town all the time. The purpose is to make a nice sign. And don't let them do it temporarily for a hundred and eighty days. Yeah, yeah. Okay, so that was one. And then on the, uh, let's see, on this. On the size, okay, so it's table B. And then it goes down. So page eight? Um, it'd be probably page, now it'll be further, it'll be page ten.
It's page eight in this one, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so table, table B that says sign type and zone allowed and that sort of thing. So we come down and. Yep, so it's to the kiosk slash bulletin board.
I see that.
Yeah, you switched it from eighty square feet to twenty square feet. And so a kiosk, I looked up kiosk and. A kiosk is a lot of different things. I mean, we have a, we have a definition in this. But a kiosk now more is what you run into in McDonald's and you do your little kiosk. Go, go order at the kiosk. You go into a lobby and you buy your train ticket. You know, what we're thinking of is a kiosk more like what's at the top of Cemetery Hill. And Britt, weren't you the one that measured that? Okay, so when we did that, it was seven feet by four feet, which is twenty eight square feet on just that one. So I think twenty is too small for what our definition of kiosk is. I think eighty is too big. I mean, it doesn't need to be eighty square feet.
It's too small for our definition of a bulletin board too around here.
Five by four.
A lot of times bulletin boards are.
Yeah, four, four, four feet by five feet is a bulletin board though. So that's, I think, is, is probably okay. Like if it was just one board.
It's a sheet of plywood, which is thirty two square feet.
Yeah, so it needs to be bigger. Probably the bulletin board and that could just be bigger. And so.
In a sense, like a kiosk, that's what the, I mean, if you have a giant kiosk, it's a billboard and it's unuseful for kiosk style.
So I was thinking maybe we should just sort of split it in the middle and put forty was my proposal on that. And then the, anyway, I thought that would cover. That's a ten by four, eight, uh, eight by six, well, not even quite eight by six, six by six. So if you look at the definition section, bulletin board, which is on page one of the, what I have, it's probably page one for all of us. So under six point six one point oh one oh A two bulletin board, it's twenty square feet. So you're suggesting we define bulletin board as. Forty, just put it at.
Do we have to have the definition list out the square footage though? Cause we've gone into that a lot with planning and zoning where their definitions become very prescriptive. As opposed to letting the ordinance dictate size or height or whatever. So do we include it in the definition and the table?
Well, he put it, he added that. So I'd say we should go with what he added, but we just need to have the size that.
Have a match.
Yeah.
Cause that's the, is that the only one that he has that prescription of twenty square feet?
Yes, because I was going.
I kind of agree with you, Erin. It's defining, it's defining what it is, not saying how large it can be.
I was going to point to eight, which is the definition of kiosk, that doesn't have the footage. And so my thought was that two and eight. Don't really need the, the footage if you're going to have it in the table. Okay. But then the question would be kiosks, depending on what the use of the kiosk is, it could be bigger than the footage that we're defining. So should we just not define footage for a kiosk and just define a bulletin board? Oh, and just take the kiosk off of the sign type? Like, cause that was one of the requests from public is to make sure that it was defined somehow. So it didn't get eliminated from being able to put one up. So you kind of need to, or is it just a sign? So I, I brought the, the ones that Design Bill Bluff, I didn't find them. I brought the picture. So, and this is just one sample. Like I say, most kiosks, and we nearly look in the definitions, they're circular. In the original ones, they're circular with pillars is a kiosk. So a kiosk can be a ton of different things, but these are the two that Design Bill Bluff built. And so is the sign the written part or is the sign the whole unit?
That's what I was going to ask. Is it the structure or is it just the board that the structure is sitting on?
You know, because like if you put the sign on a building or put a sign on, just make the sign. If you use two feet of, of border, is that counted as the sign?
The kiosk at the Great House is a gazebo.
Exactly.
Yes, and see, and that's what they were saying is it's, it's, some of them originally were round pillars, round open pillar types. So what is? Do we need anything more on that, I guess? So I, I'm not sure it really should be lumped in with the bulletin board.
If you're considering the whole structure, then that's just going to be a little bigger than, than forty square feet.
Yeah, I would, I mean, I would think it's the sign itself that the, the, the informational piece.
Yeah, because what, what number eight says it's a permanent sign for public. That's the definition. So back to the square footage. Do you want to leave it in number two and just change it in the table?
I don't, I don't think we should leave it in the definition. I don't know why a size would be included in the definition.
Okay. Yeah, that's right. Everybody want it in the definition? I think it's fine. So then in the table, what's the consensus on the table?
I wonder if you split it into its own thing. So a bulletin board, regulate it, you say this is the size, blah, blah, blah. But then have either a separate kiosk or just say the kiosk's sign must be the same as either a sign. Or if you want to increase the square footage, if it's in like a residential area, then you do regulate the size in its own line item in the table. So either it falls as a sign and has all the same applicability as what you've already defined for signs. And you're just regulating the actual sign of the kiosk and not the kiosk itself. Or you say a kiosk is separate and can be larger than just a sign in any of your zones.
That makes sense to me. So back to bulletin board. But say, but just before you go to bulletin board, say somebody wants to build a sign, put a sign up. Is there anything in here other than being a, kiosk says it's for public use? But there's nothing that says you can or cannot have a roof over it. You can have a structure around it. So there's not, just, so kiosks are permissible is basically what this is saying for public use.
Free standing informational educational direction permanent sign.
And then it's just the sign, depending on if it's like you say, in residential or in commercial, that's what dictates the size of the sign.
Not that we have any of these or that, maybe I shouldn't even bring it up, but this is thinking about bus stops. And oftentimes there is advertising on, on, you know, you have a covered bench or something. So somebody doesn't have to sit in the rain. And those often become billboard, or not billboards, but advert, advertising spaces. And as I used to go try not to miss the bus and sit in the rain, not very often, cause it never rains here. But, you know, I, I mean.
So it would fall under the sign.
Or, well, I was just wondering if that would fall under like a kiosk, because to me that's kind of what.
A public use, public information. I don't know. Well, if we get a bus, if.
We do have, we have buses every day.
With bus stops, with bus stops.
Well, yes. I mean, we officially, yeah, no, we do. I, I, I mean, I mean, the Burchards have the bench set out in front of their spot. I have kids who get on in front of my spot. There's kids at the mission.
Oh, you're talking about that kind of a bus stop, right?
Well, but it doesn't, it doesn't matter, you know? I, I mean, a bus stop. I, and I was just thinking about that as I drive across the rez and often see, you know, the covered, covered bus stops. Does that qualify as a kiosk? Cause I was trying to say, do we want to try to limit the size of kiosk?
Well, if we do, what would we limit it to?
I don't know, because the one, as, as Britt said, the one, you know, and the one up on, at the cemetery is very large. And the one out front is not, so.
Or do, does the sign?
Maybe we're just making it too complicated because we already have regulations on the other sides, you know, so if we just.
So maybe the kiosk is, is limited to what, where, where they had it was eighty two. And I don't know why it was eighty two instead of eighty six, because that was the. Maybe, cause everything else was eighty six.
It says eighty and then in parentheses twenty. So I think that we've obviously got a typo there.
Well, he just crossed out the eighty and made it twenty to fit the bulletin board size. And so I'm just saying, let's put a bulletin board section in and then a kiosk and then just put the kiosk is the same as the other signs, the eighty six. And then there's nine question. And it, and that just basically says that your sign can have a seat on it or it can have parts to it or whatever. It can be a different sort of sign. So you're talking about table B? Yeah, so table B, just add, separate kiosk and bulletin board into two spots and make bulletin board forty and kiosk eighty six. F O R. Just F O R. No U. There you go. And then, and then add a kiosk. Did you put a kiosk in there?
Forgot that one, eighty six.
Okay, yeah.
And then.
I would be happy with that. Anybody? Fine, okay.
I just wanted to verify. So we're in table B and the second one down, the building mounted, it says C, C sign table B. I assume he means C time, sign table A. So I'm going to make that change.
Okay, anything else that anyone sees? Did we get the view sheds in there and that first?
Change it and assume that you're passing this on May seventh. So I will update that.
Anything that anybody else sees that you want changed or talk about? We had quite a discussion on the municipal things and I saw he put that back in. On the governmental signs. Yeah, which I think is, is good. There were, there were a lot of changes here that I thought really cleared up some questions. I don't want to discuss them all, but. But I thought.
See, under sign permitting B, uh, we could set a sign permit, correct, a, a fee amount. And so I was just going to update that to reflect. Or should it, we just say C sign?
C permit fee, C, yeah.
Because then it could, then it could change.
Yeah, it could change up or down. And then, yeah, that's a good catch.
Cause currently it's fifty dollars a sign, but that could.
But that's on our agenda and yeah, it's, yeah, so that, the, all those, that's one thing planning and zoning tried to do too is anything that would change, you wouldn't have to come back through and change the, the ordinance. That it, uh, the less you have to edit again. So that sentence would need to be smoothed out a little bit.
Yeah, um, persons wishing to obtain a sign permit shall submit the permit application and fee.
Or just say and pay the permit fee.
To the town of Bluff. Persons wishing to obtain a sign permit shall submit a permit application and pay a permitting fee to the town of Bluff. The sign permit fee is waived.
I think you need the phrase adopted by the town though.
So just, you know.
To the town of. So she has, shall submit the permit application and pay a permitting fee to the town of Bluff. I think you need to say that there's, the form is adopted by the town. To be clear that the, there is a form. You don't just write a letter saying I'm applying for a sign permit. Refers them to the, the form. Okay, anything else?
Uh, I'm for giving them four of the waving banners instead of three, just because.
Which number are you in?
It's on table, table B.
And my, my only thing for that was.
It's on page nine.
They, uh, businesses with two entrances.
Wait, I can hardly hear you. I can hardly hear you, sorry.
Businesses with two entrances, like you got flags at both sides.
Oh, just keep an even number.
Yeah, like that, yet again, also they don't care that much about it either.
So that's the bottom category of the table B. I'm buying a four. Anybody care?
No, I'm buying a four.
I'm buying a forty.
That has been updated.
Well, and I appreciated his clarifying, like what is a nuisance and what is a safety thing and what is a, a non-maintained? It's like if it's not readable. I thought that was, you know, some defining thing. So it's not subject to, somebody doesn't like something or whatever. Yeah, if that was a defining thing, like if it's not readable anymore, then it should come down. And those old wavy flags and there's some, you know, there's some billboards in the county that aren't readable and so, anyway, I think that was good. Good on that end too. Okay, and any other changes, Erin, Erin's one?
I was just going to ask, so along the same line as Britt regarding like entrances and such, for your A frame sandwich style. You've got one allowed per business. Is that?
Is that being asked as a business owner or the manager?
Currently has one, I'm fine.
I think that that one is also odd because it's another odd number if you have two entrances. I think that that one is also odd, because it's another odd number, if you have two entrances.
Well, and, I mean, we do have, we do have businesses right now who are using multiple sandwich boards, not just one, so.
We already have. Use two, yeah, so, no, I think that's, I think that, I would agree, we need to switch that to two.
So we're on table B.
Table B, that's the first one on the list, and then the other one that, that Jen had talked about was the size of the off-premise ones to make it a square.
Hold that thought, so that we can get, see if we've got a consensus on changing the sandwich board.
Fine, two on sandwich boards.
I think it makes sense, I don't think they need four.
Well, I thi- I think, no, I think if you think about, the, the business that I'm thinking about right now is the coffee shop, and they have one that's on the one ninety-one side, and one that's on the two sixty-two side, you can't see across the parking lot to the sign, so I'm fine with it.
If you have two, two on, two entrances, or two, or, yeah.
Okay, so that, no, go ahead, sorry.
Okay, so then the other one was the off-premise sign, it was a weird sort of size of thirty.
Thirty, right.
And a sheet of plywood is.
Thirty-two, four by eight.
Four by eight, is thirty-two, so. We talked about that, just making it a sheet of plywood, it doesn't need to be a sheet of plywood, but if you, if that's the size of your sign, which is sort of a standard.
If it's allowable to do a sheet of plywood, then, you know, like, it's like we said the other day, you don't have to use all of it, but, you know, then I don't have to figure out, am I gonna cut off six inches off the top, four inches off the bottom, and that.
And that was back to, did it seem like big for our speed limit, however, but then he also said that it, it, in, in this, is it cannot impede traffic viewing of traffic and of pedestrians, which I thought was smart, so.
Right.
Uh, but I, I think we should make that something that's, I mean, that's a.
For thirty-two.
Okay.
Anything else? Because we are not discussing it Tuesday, other than to say anything we haven't already talked about. Good, that would be nice to move that one. I think we should spend.
No, I'm so sorry. Okay, um, on table A, under our residential, it's twelve square feet, does not need sign permit if non-electric, but if it's twelve square feet, it doesn't need a sign permit at all, correct?
That was the idea. If it's in residential, which is pretty big.
I got lost on that.
I know.
Sorry.
A is, do you have it up there?
Uh, it's at the top of page eight, around seven, eight.
Non-electric, right, so that's a, a three-foot by four-foot sign, um, and it's in residential. So you don't have to come and get a permit if you're putting a sign up in your yard, saying whatever you wanna say.
Right.
It can be three by four. So you're questioning the size?
I'm just questioning that little, um, in parentheses, it says, permit not needed if it's.
Not electric.
Not electric, but you don't need a permit if it's less than twelve square feet anyway?
I think that I just read that in something else.
Because it's under the exemptions, in residential or agricultural zoning districts, non-electric signs that are twelve square feet or less in area don't need the permit, but are we saying we're going to permit electric signs in residential areas?
You can't get an electric sign.
So it would be lit, it means lit sign? Non, non-illuminated, or non?
Maybe I'm not, maybe I'm just like not understanding what the purpose of those parentheses were.
I think that if there's a sign that's gonna be lit up, it needs to have a permit. No matter how big it is.
Well, if you go down to table B, where it talks about neon.
Yeah.
It says, except as exempted in section oh-three-O, per and then perns two, and so if you go to oh-three-O. Illuminated window signage, provided it complies with all outdoor lighting ordinances, so I think it's okay as it is.
Okay, so leave the parentheses about non-electric. Okay. Got it, thank you, sorry.
That's good, let's clear it up now.
So exemptions are non-electric, but then, back to your spot, Erin?
Mm-hmm.
Which is where? Because that's where it's in the chart.
Yeah, table, with the residential zone, twelve square feet, does not need sign permit if non-electric.
Table A, residential.
So if it's electric and less than twelve square feet, we're still going to need a permit for it?
Okay, where, so, right there, twelve.
Well, I think the sign, what he's saying is the sign ordinance can, can, or the, or lighting controls, because you're gonna have it.
So can I sh- can we strike that from the table in general, just if it's twelve square feet or less, it's allowed in a residential zone?
No, because. But it's not if it's non-electric signs. Okay, no, it needs, the reason it needs to stay in there is because if you want to put an electric sign, and it's twelve square feet, you have to get a permit. That's what this is reiterating.
Got it, okay.
Because if you put a sign in your yard, whether it's five square feet, or, or twenty, whatever, twelve, if it's, if, if it's twelve square feet, this says you don't have to have it unless it's electric, but if it's four square feet, or whatever, if it's lit up, it needs to. I think it needs to be if it's, if it's lit up, not just non-electric, because then it could be solar, it could be, I mean, there's a lot of ways to, solar is electric, I guess. What, how, what's a word to say that it's not illuminated, is that what it would be, non-illuminated? Because if it's four by three, one foot by twelve foot, whatever, um, and it's in a residential spot, if it's not lit up with a light, then it doesn't need a permit, but if it's lit up anyway with electricity, it needs to have a permit, with electricity or with a light on it, non-illuminated.
So in. Six point, six one point oh-three-O, A one, it talks about non-electric signs that are twelve feet or less being exempted as a sign, right? And then, number two talks about when you illuminate window signage, I think we're getting.
Well, and that's because when people put the closed and open and, and beer and whatever, those aren't regulated under dark sky either.
Right, well, that's what I'm saying, I think, I think how it's written is fine, I mean, that's just my sense.
But does it allow somebody to light up a sign in their yard without a permit, in a residential section?
It would just fall under the dark sky.
Dark sky.
Dark sky, and they have to.
Exterior lighting.
Does that mean that if somebody has a yard sign, that they want to illuminate at night and put a spotlight on it, that we have to issue them a sign permit?
I frequently have thought about getting a spotlight, but not for that reason.
I, I, I just, you know, I, I, I think about my sign, which has a light on it, you know, I, I mean, Melanie's, Melanie's isn't residential, mine is in residential-ish kind of.
No, because yours is a commercial.
Right, but my mom's has a light on it.
But it would have a, and then if it's.
And then I'm going back to my, my business owners of Bluff work session meeting, where they literally sat there with a flea comb, and said, well, what if we did, I was like, stop, you know, I mean, but.
Because the ri- the way I'm reading this table is that if it is an electric sign, no matter the size, they're gonna need a permit for it.
Right.
Electric, but not, see, electric ones don't fit in the, the, uh, dark sky anyway. You can't really have those in the, in the dark sky ordinance, so what I'm wondering about is the illuminated ones. When you shine a spotlight on it, or you shine whatever, it would match the dark sky, but do you want those to, or can everybody just light up their signs up and down the streets, I guess?
I feel like the lighting of the sign falls under exterior lighting ordinance, the sign itself, and the size, and where you put it, falls under this ordinance. And it does reference the other ordinance, and so you have to follow that one.
All right, so do we, do we have any electric signs that are permissible? So, I, I mean, I.
Is that a rhetorical question, or do you mean?
No, I'm, I really wanna know, because it doesn't need to be, like, where Erin's got highlighted, it doesn't need to be in there if none are allowed. Because like, if it, this, what this tells me is if I'm reading this, I can have, if it's more than twelve feet, I need to get a permit, but if it's less than that, I can put an electric sign up that's four feet, and that's okay?
What if it's solar?
What?
What if it's solar?
Oh, I know, but solar is electric, so I, I'm just wondering, are no electric signs are allowed anyway, so I think if we take that off, there's no confusion.
Instead of shining a sign.
I think if, if it's in there, and it was either left in there, or if you put it in there, there's a reason for it.
Because I don't remember it being there before.
I think you put it in, whatever.
I think you did too.
I went back to see it on the. Trust the lawyer, sorry, I just, as a layperson.
No, it doesn't have, it doesn't have a blue line under it.
As a layperson, I was confused.
Yeah, so, yeah, let's just take that out.
And I want the public to know what it means.
Let's just take that out.
Is there consensus on that, or we're just removing the parentheses?
Yeah, just take, take that whole sentence out.
Okay.
An antonym for eliminated is confused, so.
Yeah, and then it automatically refers you back to the fa- I, I like that better.
Okay.
Okay, I would say, unless somebody has something else they wanna add, let's jump over to number two for a minute, because we're gonna end at three. So we have about ten minutes.
Two, capital.
Capital improvements plan.
The fee schedule.
Skip the fee schedule changes for right now, and let's just go to capital projects. Um, so, this is something we need to have in the budget discussion. We've talked about it in one other work session, or one other meeting, about what's a capital project, and what should we be looking at.
Do we have a fire alarm? I don't know what that sounded like.
Is that our new ADA accessible door?
That's stuck.
I wonder if somebody's trying to open it, and I, I locked the back door.
We can keep moving, they'll find us.
Yeah, they'll, they'll probably.
Okay. So. I thought it was probably a good idea to put this on the work session to talk about making sure we have a, a complete, or at least as complete a list as we can come up with as to what a capital improvement project would look like, so that when we're talking about the budget, the fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget, and looking forward, we're looking at how we're defining use of the money that we have, particularly in the PTIF. The, I never, I would never, the public investment.
Public treasury investment fund.
Public treasury investment.
Move the microphone just a little closer to yourself, sorry.
Okay, that's okay. And so, the, the ones that came to mind that we had talked about were obviously the, um, the old school, the CCC Cooperative Cultural Center, the airport, um, Calf Canyon Road repair, um, over that bridge abutment. That's been something that Michael Havakin has been talking about, and there's a wide disparity of memory as to what the BSA was spending on things for that, to fix it, if they were going to fix it, and a wide disparity among people who've looked at it as to what they think it would cost, so we don't have any ballpark for that, but that is something that would come out of Class C funds, but it's something we should have on the list. Then, if we end up having the Bluff Cemetery under our auspice, that's going to require some immediate, um, funding. But Erin and I talked about, is it maintenance, or is it just gonna be like a one-time, everything we need to do to move it over and make it? Uh, and depending on what Southwest Heritage wants to do with the kiosks that's up there, like, whether they're going to expect the town to maintain it, or would they continue to non-maintain it? Um, and then thrown into the mix, I would like to raise an elephant in the room that doesn't really ever get talked about, because when you say barwell, people go, what is barwell? Well, barwell is another asset that we own, that we do nothing with, that we don't take care of. The only care that's been provided in the last couple of years is if, about once a year, it gets mowed or something, and I've used AmeriCorps to clean it up. I know that, the neighbors, a couple of the neighbors bears his partnership in Bev Smith, and I think, uh, Mike Yaris have maintained it. But it's sitting there, and I would like people to consider putting it on the market, and putting that money to good use, either in recreation funds, like, whatever we need to do with, with this building, or the Cooperative Cultural Center. I, it bothers me to see, when I drive down that street, it bothers me to see that it's totally, pretty much ignored. I put a picnic table there last year, bought a picnic table for it, uh, from Comridge, had AmeriCorps work on it. Nobody knows it's there, except the people around it, and if, and I've had inquiries, and what I've said to people when they inquire is, I don't believe it's up to the town to say, we wanna sell this, well, I'm back to changing my mind. I think that's a discussion we should have about the value of that, the value to surrounding community property owners that might make better use of it and maintain it, um, and if not, then we need to put it into a plan as to what we're doing with it, because it is just sitting and collecting beer cans to blow over there, trash, and weeds.
If we were to sell it, I question as to where, whether, and it may already, already be permanently capped, but it seems like some, I, I, with it being directly tied to the aquifer as it is, I, I, I wonder if there's.
Would we have to do something?
Yes, becau- because, I mean, we, we don't want somebody buying it and then just tapping into that well for some reason, and having access to, to the aquifer.
And, you know, that's a good, a really good question, and it's certainly something to, but I'm throwing that out as something I'd like to see as part of the, the bigger discussion with the capital improvement plan.
Well, I mean, that's, that's just my question with that, and I only, I only think about that because at one point in time, I was looking at purchasing a piece of property that was adjacent to another unused well, but still connected to the system, and there's a lot of restrictions that go along with that. And, which, I mean, is one. It, which, I mean, is why the town of Bluff has the Barwell property as opposed to somebody else anyways, cause you can't do anything with it.
Yeah, and that, and there is a process. If, if we were to decide we wanted to do something with it in terms of putting it on the market, you just can't list it on the market. You have to go through public hearings and do some things, but, um. So looking at the list that I could come up with off the top of my head as to what our previous discussions have been, are there other capital improvement projects that people wanna put on the list? So when we get to the budget and we start talking about the matrix that Erin sent out, how we evaluate these projects?
Well, I have a, a question again. So I don't know what projects are in it already. Cause I remember in the Brantonsayers days, we had like thirty thousand or something put into open space as a capital im- um, improvements plan. But I, I, but I'm saying I just have it off my memory. I remember there was, I think, twenty-one thousand for a roof here, which I always questioned because it's metal and, and it doesn't take a whole new roof every couple of years, like, you know, twenty years or whatever, it's like, it's metal, it might need some new screws. But I remember it seemed like there was twenty-one thousand there. It seemed like there was money for parks and it seems like there was money for, um, secondary water. It seemed like there was money put in either from. I remember us specifically putting in the thirty for open space. And I kinda remember the, the secondary water, but I don't know if that was back to BSA days. But like where, what do we have in there right now? Cause I, I don't have that information.
Well, we all have the information, except for maybe you two. But I found it when I was looking through things, so I can pull it out and send it to you because we either did it by a resolution or we did it through a, a, a project plan, but I have it.
But it should show up just in the budget, genit- or like in the florist?
Yeah, there's, there's.
This is how much is in.
There is a section where you can list it in the back of the budget, the, I think the last addendum. But I, one of the things that keeps coming up is some of those things that you listed, I think the roof is one of them. Was a BSA capital improvement project that people thought we had to carry over, which we do not need to carry over. And so I'll find the thing you're talk, the document you're talking about Luke, so it does list some things that we talked about. And again, those are fluid, so we can move, add, take away. But that's why we need to have that discussion because when we had that discussion, we didn't have the CCC to the extent that we do now. I think we did that one in twenty twenty-one, so right prior to acquiring the building. So I'll get that out and hopefully be able to make a part of the packet for Tuesday.
Yeah, well, because like, it just seems like it would show up in our, in our financial report? That it would just show capital improvements, we have this much set aside for parks, we have this much set aside for the airport, we have this much set aside for, you know, whatever in that capital improvements fund. It just seems like there should be a list of that that would show up every year and we would add to that. And then, so I remember saying, let's put thirty thousand over and put it into the open space.
I will, I'll find the document that you're talking about.
Okay.
And get that in the packet for Tuesday.
Okay, or send it ahead of time, I'm just curious.
Well, that's gonna assume I have time between now and the time I put the agenda stuff. I'm not doing the best job of getting things to Linda and to Erin. Because the week just seems to be.
That's just, and that's fine, there's, I, I'm not in a rush for it, I just, before I make a decision on it, I just wanna know what we already have set aside in those categories. Um, and then the other one I had, um, because I think all of those are still kinda relevant to what was brought up in the strategic planning and stuff. Um, but the other one is the solar. Because, you know, we've talked about that through all these buildings. And that, you know, I don't know if CIB would fund that, that's a whole nother category.
No, 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 CIB will not fund it.
I know, but I mean, it's, it's a list that's not necessarily CIB, but capital improvements that, that we heard throughout the community that they wanna do. So. Um, but if any of those have been taken off or if they're no longer funded, that's what I'm.
I, I'll find.
Okay.
I'll, I'll find it, I know that I ran across it when I was pulling some other stuff.
And we don't have to keep it in whatever, cause BSA sent us some money, I can't remember how much, but we don't have to do whatever they did. We're a new entity and can do.
Correct.
Okay.
We, we absorbed them through a document. And we have confirmed many times with the state auditor and our accountant that we do not have to have a word for word, dollar for dollar transfer from the BSA, we can re.
Because they're, they're, they're done.
Correct.
Right, okay, so, um, and then on the cemetery, I don't see that that, that there's, other than maintenance or like the Barwell, I mean, maybe, you know, one time they went up there and mowed the whole thing and, and they sort of agreed they one side and not the other, keep some of the native stuff going. You know, it's, it, uh, it's all, it kind of depends on what people see as needing ton. My mom was one who wanted green grass and a pretty place. And always crying me out because everybody's idea of what it should look like, to me, it's fine. It's fine just the way it is. And, but we need to have the, the, uh, entity part figured out to where we know who goes up and helps people get buried and how we get it lined up. But do we want paved roads on all those roads? I don't think so, you know?
Let me just point you to the cemetery regulations that require all cemeteries registered with the state to be maintained in a very specific way, including mowing, fencing, signage. How high you could have anything off the ground. And if San Juan County transfers their interest in the cemetery and we acquire a cemetery, it becomes a cemetery district and it is subject to the state laws, which will require a capital improvement project because we'll have to have those discussions.
But the, the county didn't, wasn't under those regulations?
How do I say this in a politically correct way?
I mean, we keep doing what they were doing, it's, it's been fine.
Well, but the county does a lot of things incorrectly that we don't need to continue that process, I don't think.
The cemetery came up when we incorporated because there are three people on the San Juan County Cemetery Board, one of whom is deceased and two have never had their terms renewed. The cemetery board has never held a meeting, they have never had any minutes, they have never filed with the state auditor's department. They have not complied with any of the regulatory reporting for transparency. Now. The push has been back for Bluff to take some of the services over in the cemetery is one of the things that we raised six years ago about taking. And if we were to, if San Juan County is going the direction that Mac McDonald has told me they're going, which is to relinquishing any interest in the cemetery, then if we decide that we're taking it on, we will have to comply with those state regulations. There will not be an option. You can probably skate on the mowing, mows in, in Bluff really. I mean, probably some things are not going to be applicable. But there are some things that are going to be applicable. One of them will be all the administrative stuff, which would fit into the budget. But the other would be, do we have to have fencing? Do we have to put some of these improvements in place? So it's a big discussion. And it probably should be discussed as a possibility in the capital improvement. Other ones anybody's come up with so that we can kinda have a list in our brain? And everyone has the matrix that Erin sent out, right?
Public bathroom at West Park.
Mm-hmm.
Or West Park Improvement, including the public bathroom.
We had wifi, hot points, as hotspots as something as well.
And that public bathroom, um, if we have a building, then we've got to repair the building and we've gotta maintain it and water and so on. So that's when it would bounce back to, there's a service in the county to put a porta potty there and they do all of that. And it doesn't break down and it doesn't need repairs.
Or we don't have to hire anyone.
Right.
I mean, which is gonna be a big thing because you'd have to be, be daily.
And the supplies and all the rest that go into it, they supply all of that and I think that would be a way to start it.
And I'm not opposed to something like that, but I just think that for your business's sake and for another business's sake and for your business's sake and for my business's sake, that we need some kind of public restroom in this town that's available to everyone's use now.
I think the fact that we have, kind of have that already, KNC has one for.
No, 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 that's not a public, I mean, it is a public bathroom, but that is, you know, I mean, that's our businesses having to maintain this stuff. And when KNC is closed, that bathroom is no longer open. When the laundromat is closed, that bathroom is no longer open, you know, it's so.
And then people stop on the road and it's like, you know, it's a problem. At night, it was really nice when it was COVID and there were a couple of outhouses. And they, they do that, you know, like, um, at, at, uh, gas stations along the way, other places that you, you just have something out there so people can stop and use it because it is missing in town and, and, you know, sometime, not many people go up to the cemetery, but sometimes. And it's just, you know, they stop in the parking lots and things, so it's, it's something that we should address, but I don't know if we need a permit structure.
It's not fair to the business owners to have to absorb all of that either.
So it's on the list to talk about? Anybody else wanna add to the list or shall I just kinda organize a few thoughts and send that out to everyone for Tuesday? Because.
That's nine things, so that's a lot.
Yeah, yeah, and, and I'm not sure what's on the, the other list, so, I mean, we'll need to pare things down and make adjustments.
The only other thing I, I would add would be like a downtown pla- or like a walkable main street plan. Cause we've talked a lot about, um, and maybe I'm not saying that right, but like that downtown area. So not necessarily implementing it or doing the construction for it, but the money for the planning process. Cause that's in our strategic plan.
Is that not being addressed already through the, through the trail?
To the, through the trail?
See, and that, what that.
Those two separate projects.
Okay. And I don't know where that made it on the strategic planning, but that's the whole idea of making the residential that was zoned residential back to commercial. And doing away with that whole residential, that's what that plan does. Cause that's the only main street we have besides the highway and the highway will be taken care of with the active transportation trail.
Okay, so we can have some detailed discussions when we're looking at the budget. It's three oh nine, I know that Erin and I have another meeting at three thirty and I'd like a break. If no one objects, we'll wrap up at three oh nine.
But can, um, can I just ask a question about number five, where that came from and why that's, like, that just sort of came out of the blue? I've not heard any discussion about it ever.
No, it came from me. Yeah.
But because of the state, something or, or just your wanting?
Because I'd like to have a discussion about it.
Okay.
Yep, but it's not imperative to have it in the next couple of months, we've got a lot going on, so. It's three ten, is there a motion?
Uh, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Right.
Anyone opposed?
Do we have a, uh, do we have a document to submit for voting on the Fire Nation Kitchen on Tuesday?
A document to do what?
To vote on, on the Fire Nation Kitchen.
Yep, it was in your packet last week, or the last meeting.
Okay, so that's the one we're gonna vote on, okay.
That's the one we're considering. Okay, we, we return, we're discussing, we have to be done with this.
Well, let's send that out again so we know what.